Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is 9:03 a.m. Secretary Armijo, is she here today? She's not here?
She has a funeral to attend this morning, so I'll do it until she gets here.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burt. Do you mind taking real call, please?
Chair Brower?
Present.
Vice Chair Burt is here. Secretary Armijo, not present. Commissioner Ingham?
Here.
Commissioner Kloschichilich? Not present. Commissioner Gibson?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Manis? Not present. Commissioner Beck?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor? Not present. And Commissioner Correa?
Here.
That's a quorum of six.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Beck, do you mind leading us into the Pledge of Allegiance? And then, in lieu of Commissioner Armijo, Commissioner Correa, can you lead us into the Salute of the New Mexican Flag? Thank you. Thank you. Let's move into item number two, Approval of Agenda.
Move to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
All right.
Motion to approve.
We have to do a real call, I believe, don't we? We don't do a... We have people on... Yeah, so Vice Chair Burt, can you do a real call real quick?
Sure. Commissioner Correa?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Chair Brower?
Yes.
And Commissioner Burt is yes. That passes 6-0.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burt. Now, we're moving to open forum. Missy, do you have any folks for open forum?
We do not.
We do not? Wow. Well, we may meet Commissioner Gibson's goal today of adjournment. So... Let's move to item number four, then, Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda?
Second.
Vice Chair, mind taking real call?
Commissioner Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Burt, yes. Commissioner Correa?
Yes.
And Chair Brower?
Yes.
Right, that passes 6-0.
Great, thank you, Vice Chair. Let's move to item number six, Introduction of New Head Administrators. Director Chavez?
Chair Brower, one of the head administrators is trying to log on right now. And Lucy is the second one in attendance. Yes, Piper is on. All right, so Ms. Piper Curry is the new head administrator for the Montessori Elementary and Middle School. Welcome.
Thank you so much. I look forward to working with you all.
Would you like to share a little bit more about yourself? And we'd love to just learn a little bit about your background. And yeah, feel free to take a little bit of time to share.
Absolutely, absolutely. I have been with the Montessori Elementary and Middle School now for... Next year will be my fifth year. I've been working in administration here for two years. We have wonderful teachers, staff, students, and I look forward to supporting the work and continuing to work with the board to continue to make our school a wonderful place. So, thank you all for having me this morning and giving me the opportunity to introduce myself.
Thank you so much. And I believe I visited with you during testing time, right? When I came in to visit?
I am sure you probably did, yes. I am the... I've been the district testing coordinator now during my whole time here. And so, I've maybe met a few of you, especially if you've ever been in our school or site visits the last five years, you've definitely seen my face here, so...
Yeah, great.
Thank you all.
This was about a month ago when I stopped in with Stan. I think you were...
Yes, yes, yes. I absolutely remember that, yes. So, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, and I forgot that you can't see... You can only see my bald head from the back. You can't see my face, so...
Because you do the Equity Council work, and we were discussing...
Yeah, for sure. Good to see you, thank you. Thanks for all the work you're doing and all the work you will be doing. Commissioner Correa?
Hi, thank you for joining us this morning and for the work you do. First off, so I'm Commissioner Correa, and I have District 10, which is basically Santa Fe, Cepar, Estancia, all the way to the Colorado border, and Taos, Ria Reba, Colfax, all of that. But I have a question regarding Montessori, and I just... Did we just lose you on Zoom? Oh, there you are.
I'm here.
So, I would imagine that yours is... And I'm going to use the word actual... An actual Montessori school that's keeping with the Montessori curriculum and everything. My computer keeps going wackadoo. As opposed to a Montessori-inspired, would you say that's accurate?
We are... We like to consider ourselves kind of a hybrid just because we still have the state testing requirements. We still meet the state standards, just like every other public school. However, we follow the Montessori pedagogy. And our teachers, we have master Montessorians, and then our teachers that are not trained as master Montessorians are trained by those teachers, and they work closely hand in hand. We use Montessori materials. And so, that is how we incorporate that Montessori.
That's great news. Just, you know, we've heard lately the Montessori Light and Montessori Inspired. And so, I'm very happy to hear that you're actually, you know, maintain fidelity to the Montessori standards. That's very important, and I want to thank you for that because it's a great addition to the community. I know you're down in Albuquerque, and I'm hoping that we're going to have a Montessori, either magnet or charter, up here in Santa Fe relatively soon to give parents and kids choice, you know, without having to spend $20,000 a year. So, but thank you very much for the work you do, anything in service to our kids.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Of course.
So, thank you for being here, Piper. I look forward to meeting you and going to your school. And we wish Ms. Basante all the best as she moves on to what she's doing next. Chair Brower, we're still waiting for Ms. Romero from Alma de Arte to... Oh, she's in?
Yes.
Okay, so the next head administrator that I'd like to introduce to the commission is an interim head administrator at Alma de Arte, Ms. Cecilia Romero. And so, Cecilia, if you could, I don't see her, but when you are promoted to the panel, if you could turn your camera on and say hello to the commission?
It appears that she's dropped off the meeting.
Okay.
Lucy or Missy, is there anybody coming back on? Okay. I think we can move on.
I don't see her.
Yeah.
I don't see her, Chair Brower.
Okay. So sorry we missed you, but welcome to the team. And we look forward to working with you as we continue to progress this year and years in the future, for sure. Any other ones? Director Chavez?
Those are the new head administrators for this meeting.
Great, thank you. Let's move on to item number seven, Discussion of Implementation Year for Explore Rio Rancho.
Absolutely. So, commissioners, you know that when a charter school is approved, that is just the beginning. They have many things to do and many things to put into place as they get ready to open up their doors. In this case, Explore Rio Rancho is a set of founders that have opened up other charter schools. And Ms. Brown has been working very closely with them during this implementation year to review the submittals and to ensure that they're on track for opening their doors. We don't have materials, and this is not the final check-in with the commission to get an approval. So, this is not an action item. This is just a update. And I will turn it over to Ms. Brown. Please note, there are some members of the Explore team in the audience, but this was meant to be just a very quick update from the Charter Schools Division. So, I'm turning it over to Missy.
Missy, real quick, Commissioner Correa?
I know that Karen... I can't see all the stuff, but I know that, excuse me, Karen's in the audience who wanted to be promoted to the panel. Thank you.
So, I have promoted Karen Warner to the panel. My report is that the school is on track with the IY checklist. March was completed. No issues were identified. The May submission has been submitted. And I've scheduled a meeting with the school for next Friday to go over the review. I have not yet started to review the documents, but the school has been on track with everything, very helpful in getting anything that we've asked for. But of course, they're an exemplary applicant because they've done it before. And so, there haven't been any issues. I do want to call out the fact that they do have the best board calendar submission that I've seen so far since the commission accepted that change that I had advised on. So, I was very pleased to see that. That's all.
Any questions from the commission? All right, seeing no questions. I don't know if there's any hands raised on the Zoom.
Karen's hands are up.
All right, Ms. Warner, good to have you here. Sorry, I can't see you on the Zoom right now. But I... If you have some additional thoughts, feel free to share.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chair Brower, commissioners. I just wanted to say first thanks to Missy, and the calendar is as good as it is because of Missy's work with training the governing board. So, we do listen and pay attention. I'm very proud of this board. I also wanted to share that because this item was listed as an agenda item, our board was very concerned about whether they should be here today. I just wanted you all to know that if they... If we had been communicated that there needed to be a discussion, they would have been here. We met as a board last night. But having this as a specific item on the agenda for an update was concerning for me and for the board. And I just wanted to share that, that when a school is listed specifically as an item on the agenda, it's a little nerve-wracking when you're on this side of the table. So, I just wanted to share that, and thank you for changing it to just discussion. And I was the one who advised the board they didn't need to attend because, as you all know, I normally feel that it's very important for us to be there, not only attend, but in person if we can. So, I just wanted to share that and thank Missy for the work that she's done, not only for implementation year, but for governing board training as well. And would appreciate if the commission would consider not listing schools as specific agenda items if it's just an update for the reactions it causes on this side. And that's all, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. Let's move into item number eight, Discussion and Possible Action to Start Closure Protocol for Latteata Montessori School for the Arts and Sciences and Possible Action Under the Intervention Ladder.
If we can move to item nine, I will upload the final document. I had to make two changes to yesterday's document.
Okay, so we'll move... We're... If it's okay with the commission, based upon our conversations yesterday in our work session, item nine and 10 will likely be continued... We need continued discussion on those two items. So, if you all are okay with us moving on to item number 11, we can do that. Great, thank you. Item number 11, Discussion and Possible Action on PEC Letter of Support for Charter School Program Grant Application. So, I, first off, thank you, Dr. Russell and the Director Chavez for getting this on the agenda by the... Our timeline. I received a call from Matt Paul last week on Friday to see if I would be able to write a letter of support on behalf of the PEC to support the new charter school program grant that Public Charter Schools of New Mexico is taking the lead on for the state of New Mexico. Not sure if you all... I don't... And I wasn't sure if this is something that has been in discussion with the PEC prior to me coming on. But it sounded like, and Director Chavez, if you need to add more clarity and texture, feel free. It sounded like there have been discussions with the PED and the Public Charter Schools of New Mexico to kind of figure out who should be the grant lead. And there were discussions that the Public Charter Schools should be the grant lead to write this. So, the application, I believe, is due on June 3rd, I believe, is when it's due. Karina, if I'm wrong, correct me on that. Bridget, if I'm wrong, correct me on that. But it seemed like it was a pretty quick process in terms of making sure that they receive letters of support. But I also wanted to bring this to the commission to make sure that we had... That we were able to take an action on this, and we feel good about supporting where it is. So, Karina, Bridget, if there are other parts, I'd love to have you share. And then, I'd like to open it up to discussion for the PEC.
Mr. Chair, the date I have is June 5th.
Okay. I was off by two days.
Commissioners, I'll just share that this is the federal grant that has been around for a while and that states and organizations within states are eligible to apply for to support new and expanding charter schools. We have had a grant that we've done two years of no-cost extension, or three? Oh, one year of a no-cost extension. So, we're winding that down. We will close it out in September. And we found out very quickly that there was a request for proposals that New Mexico was eligible to apply for. Public Charter Schools New Mexico and the Public Education Department did talk about this. We are in support, in terms of PED, we are in support of Public Charter Schools New Mexico applying for the grant. We're collaborating with them in terms of what are some really excellent technical assistance components to the application and how have we in the past managed this? So, we look at this grant opportunity and as a partnership and one that will support new and expanding charter schools and one that will bring Public Charter Schools New Mexico and PED together to support new schools. And I just want to mention that I don't know if Wayne has anything that he wants to add to the application. I know Matt Paul has taken lead in drafting it. But yeah, we would support PEC supporting Public Charter Schools New Mexico.
Mr. Sherwood, do you have any other additional comments?
Good morning, Commissioner Brower and commissioners. Matt was taking the lead on this, and I don't know that he was aware that it was going to come so quickly on the agenda this morning. So, but yes, the PCSNM is really excited about applying for this grant and working collaboratively with the CSD and the PEC on this and supporting the new charter schools and the expansion of existing charter schools. This is going to be the biggest grant that PCSNM has ever received. So, we're looking forward to that. We're looking forward to ramping up the workforce to support this grant. We're hoping that with the PCSNM receiving this grant, we will be able to turn around... The turnaround time for when a school applies and actually gets the grant. We're hoping that we're going to be able to support them with financial support very rapidly instead of a lag time of sometimes six months to nine months, what is occurring right now. So, that's the main reason PCSNM, I feel that they would like to be the lead on this grant.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments, questions from our commission? Commissioner Ingham?
I'm kind of like going to headlights. I don't... I don't remember, even before I was a commissioner listening, I don't remember any discussion about this. And I would really love to know what kind of support you're talking about. Is it facility support? Is it program support? What... Can you describe a little bit for me? Because I am completely... I don't... I'm ignorant.
Yeah, so I will let... Thank you, Commissioner Ingham. And I think we can give like the big headlines. So, today, the question is, would you... Like, the action item is to... Yeah, if you would support me in writing a letter. And the Charter School Program Grant is a federal grant that New Mexico has received multiple times, right? This is not the first time. We just finished up one process for it. And so, it... So, the PED administrated it in the past. And now, Bridget actually was one of the administrators when I was here with... In Karina's seat. And so, yeah, so we want to like see if we feel comfortable in giving me the ability to write a letter of support. But if we could do a quick overview of what the CSP grant is, whoever feels like most equipped for Commissioner Ingham and other commissioners, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Chair Brower and commissioners. The Charter School Program Grant is awarded by the U.S. Department of Education to a state entity, which can be the state education agency, the PED, or it can be another entity. Some states have the state entity that's not the state agency, as PCSNM would be in this case. The function... The purpose of the grant is to open new, high-quality charter schools and/or expand the enrollment of existing high-quality charter schools. And so, funds are awarded to state entities to help new schools open or to help existing schools that meet certain benchmark requirements expand their enrollment and add new grade levels or new seats to students. Commissioners, I'll just add that... So, if there are existing charter schools that maybe need facility support, that is not what this grant is. This is for the applications we're going to receive and the schools that are getting ready to open up their doors, such as Explore Rio Rancho. Or if there's an existing school that wants... That is an elementary, and they want to open up a middle, for example, they could receive some of those funds. But the grant is limited in scope in that regard. But there is a portion of the grant that goes to the administrator. So, in this case, it would be Public Charter Schools New Mexico. I believe it's 7%? 3% that they get to retain and use to provide services for all. It wouldn't be enough to help someone open up a facility. It might be enough to do some, I don't know, mentoring of business managers, for example. So, the 7% that is the technical assistance portion. So, 90% of the award must go to schools. 10% of it is administrative. 7% of that, 7% of the total grant, goes to technical assistance. And 3% of the grant maximum goes to program administration. So, staff, you know, positions here at the PED when we have the grant. You can spend less than 3% on administration if you don't need the full 3%, but you have to spend at least 90% on awards to schools and at least 7% on technical assistance.
Can I ask one?
You have the floor.
Okay. The question I had was, you said only new schools. What if you have a existing school that wants to get a new facility?
No, that's not what this is for.
It's not about facility, basically.
No. But if an existing school wants to expand their enrollment or add grades, that's allowable. So, if a facility is part of that, but just increasing the enrollment of existing schools is an allowable expenditure.
Commissioner Ingham, within the grant application itself, and maybe we can get the... Some of those... Some of that context offline so that you have an understanding about what's allowable, what's not. There's specifics around not new builds, but expanding rooms or adjusting the current interior to make more room. So, there's all kinds of very specific things that would probably wet your whistle to see what that looks like. So, maybe that's something that we can do offline so that you can gather some more information. Commissioner Beck, then Commissioner Gibson?
Real quickly, we're talking percentages. This is a five-year grant, is that right?
Typically, it's a three-year grant, but you can ask for extensions if you don't expend all of it.
Okay, and how is the dollar amount determined? We're talking percentages. How's the dollar amount determined?
The dollar amount is based on membership or the projected enrollment at the school.
Do you have any idea what we're talking about? Dollars for New Mexico?
So, I'll let Deputy Director speak to that. Or Wayne, if you have an amount that you're applying for.
Yes, commissioners, thank you. It could be up to $45 million. And schools could receive... Yeah, it's $45 million for the three years. And schools could receive from $1 to $2 million for this grant.
Commissioner Gibson, thank you.
I just wanted to say that what it really does is for... Especially for the new schools, it allows the applicant to hire the head administrator during that implementation or planning year so that there's really a more thoughtful time in putting into the planning of it so that someone doesn't have to be doing a full-time job. And at the same time, everything that you have to do for the implementation year, they can hire someone. And hopefully, then they've got that person in place when the school year... When their school year really starts, and they're... They've worked on it all. So, you're not just having a group out here voluntarily doing their implementation year materials and then hiring someone, and they have to come in, and they haven't been part of that conversation. So, it makes it a much better starting for if the applicant is successful because they have to apply for the grant, not just apply to us to get the school. But then, there's also parameters for who qualifies for the grant money. So, but that's really what it helps.
Commissioner Correa?
So, does this mean that those schools that we may approve this fall for next... You know, for their implementation year, will they be eligible to apply? Okay, that's fantastic. And because I know that's also what we were trying to do the last year or two with the legislature, is have them set aside money, you know, specifically. the last year or two with the legislature is have them set aside money, you know, specifically for startups. So they weren't, you know, always just struggling. I know that was something we discussed. We didn't. There was nothing, no bill or anything. Well, that's what this does.
That's what this does.
This is great.
It does. And we have at least since I've been on, we've always put a letter in of support for it.
Thank you. Yep, and our motion would be again, we're we're focusing it on. You're gonna you're gonna allow provide me and there is a motion within our motions. So if we'd like to use it, but essentially, we're going to vote on giving me the opportunity to write a letter in support.
Well, then I would move that the the PEC issue a letter or that we support a that our chair write a letter for the Charter School Program Grant application.
Second.
We have a second. Let's move into discussion of the motion. Any further comments or discussion items for this motion? Seeing none, Vice Chair Burt, can you do a roll call, please?
Chair Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Creo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Engum?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
And Commissioner Burt, yes, that passes six zero.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Commissioner Manas also votes yes.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Manas for joining us. Is there? Let's make the record share that Commissioner Manas was at least with us at nine thirty-four. Is there anyone else that has joined? Any other commissioners? Okay.
I want to thank you, everybody, for for doing that and supporting that.
Thank you. And Commissioner Manas, I apologize. I didn't see you. I don't see you on the Zoom from my my vantage point. Let's move. Director Chavez, can we move back up to item number eight?
Yes.
All right. So Commissioners, we're gonna we're gonna move back up to item number eight.
It's actually item. Yeah, item number eight.
Discussion and possible action to start closure protocol for La Tierra.
Correct. So yesterday, Commissioners, we discussed the closure protocol. During the work session, we made some edits. The edit that I made was to remove the PED legal counsel from the transition team, and I also inserted the name and corrected the title of the person from the PED Communications Team that would be part of the transition team. This document has been sent to the school. We've let them know that it was going to be discussed. We have staff that are visiting the school next week and we're having a meeting with all people financial related to the school to start implementing the steps in this plan. It is uploaded as a PDF right now in your folder.
Commissioner Creo?
Can Missy, can you share the document on the screen? Because there were people that think that weren't here yesterday that may want to. Well, they should see it certainly before they vote on it.
Oh, eight, item eight, LTMS School Closure Protocol.
I can I can.
Well, and also for people that are, I don't know how many people are in the audience or whatever that are watching, I think we should go. You can make a motion certainly, but we should go over it just as a matter of record after the motion is made. No, I know I can go to participants, but I can't.
Commissioner Creo, I think from how I am interpreting what you said, to kind of go through some of the big bullet headlines of this, but not necessarily go point by point. Is that right?
Yes, and to the extent we drill down further, should somebody need more information?
I'm happy to walk you through this closure protocol. So Commissioners, you voted to close La Tierra Montessori School for Arts and Sciences in and you sent a letter to the school in May. So the school technically has the opportunity to appeal, but until then, we are moving forward because should the school not be in operation next school year, that begins July one, that they would end operations. And so what this plan does is is it accounts for the needs of students, staff in particular, to have a plan that allows them to transition out of the school and for us to obtain all the documents that are part of the school's record, right? So we keep the documents. And as I mentioned yesterday, there's several schools that have closed, several charter schools that have closed in New Mexico, and we often get phone calls from former students or staff that want verification or copies of their transcripts. So we need to obtain those documents also because the school is an existing entity with vendors and and a lease and materials that they possess. There has to be a systematic process for helping the school to dispose of any of the assets that they have. And there's laws that guide the process for that. They cannot just on the last day of school say, okay, whoever wants to take this or that home, go ahead. We have to inventory. We have to make sure that we're following the requirements in the past. For example, if materials were purchased using the Charter Schools Program Grant, and this is one of the things that the Charter Schools Program Grant does, is a lot of times it purchases the materials, the instructional materials, and in the case of a Montessori, all the manipulatives and other Montessori materials, we have to inventory them. And then we have to create a very systematic and documented process for gifting them to another school. And if it's a Charter Schools Program Grant purchase set of materials, there's guidelines from the feds that tell us exactly how that should occur, who gets preference over that. So that is what this does. The 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 protocol specifies the need to have a couple of contractors from the CSD to work closely on a day-to-day basis with the charter schools. They will be looking at the financials in collaboration with PED and CSD and the school. And the school liaison is the person that's going to physically be at the school taking inventory and managing that process of dispersing the any assets that need to be dispersed. I'll stand for any questions on this plan, but really, it just anticipates a preparation for the school to close its doors. And of immediate concern is that there's communication to staff and students and families that that allow them to understand what their options are if they have not yet already selected other schools to attend. That's one of the first things that we're going to talk to the school about is having a school choice fair on campus so families can get some support and guidance as they register at another school. Any questions?
So I would, just for the record, if Julio, if you wouldn't mind going through some of the dates, because I know yesterday we discussed that on May 5th is when they receive the letter. They have thirty days in which to, you know, appeal to the secretary. Then there's that time, you know, just so that those that weren't here yesterday understand the, to me, horrifically extended timeline that this could take.
So they do have thirty days to appeal. I'm going to start with the fact that you you revoked that charter and that action stands until someone stops it. That action also stands and the closure of the school continues unless the cabinet secretary or potentially a district court issues a stay of your order. So it's not automatic. Your your decision is what stands until something happens, and that only would happen if the school asked for it. The school does have due process rights under the statute. They have an ability to to appeal to the secretary thirty days after our letter, and our letter had to contain all of the findings and conclusions of law that that you revoked based on the New Mexico Charter Schools Act. And that's why we needed the transcript so that it could reference that. That document happened, that thirty days starts from the date that they got that letter. And then the secretary, I believe, has sixty days to schedule a hearing, and then there's no timelines for when the secretary has to take action on it. I think, as people mentioned yesterday, if they do appeal, there will be a hearing. There typically is a hearing officer at that hearing. It's similar to the revocation hearing. It's three hours long. Each side gets to present arguments essentially based on the brief that the school would need to provide. And then we have an opportunity to support your decision at that hearing. Then the secretary will get a recommendation from the hearing officer and they can either, he can either accept it or or reject it. It's a proposed document to him. And then after that ruling, there is a process to appeal to district court. All of those timings happen from the date of the next action. And I'll just end by saying that they have to ask for a stay of this closure protocol. So CSD on your behalf will continue to close the school. Your action stands. So it's perfectly appropriate to be moving forward and taking the action that you're taking today. If they don't appeal, your action stands. The school will be closed.
Then it's safe to say that if the secretary if they don't appeal to the sec or if they do appeal to the secretary and he decides in forty days, but then there's really no hearing for another thirty days. Now, we could get into August when school would typically start, but because there'd be no stays granted by that time, school's not starting.
Correct. He would have to issue some.
Have to do something immediately to issue a stay.
Do something immediately to say that the school could open again in for this next year.
Thank you. Okay.
And we have thirty, yeah, actually, it was May ninth. I double-checked it. So it's June ninth. The it said May 5th yesterday, though, and I went and double-checked the records, so. Is correct.
Sounds like we need to make a correction then.
No, I made the correction yesterday. I went and checked it yesterday. And and this document should be right, but the the date of the letter is the date that the thirty days started. It's now correct also in this chart, but if this chart was wrong, then then that wouldn't matter. It's everything goes by the date and someone receives it. And they would need to provide us with with the secretary with notice of appeal. And that essentially has a brief attached to it that says why they believe your actions were incorrect. That triggers an opportunity for us to provide a brief to the secretary to support it and then a hearing similar to the one that you had. But the first action starts with the school.
Go ahead, Commissioner Engum.
Yeah, so the would their board have to have a public meeting to to determine that, to ask for that, whatever, to appeal it? Or can they? They they have to have a public meeting and they have to announce that meeting and it and so as of today, they have not made any efforts to change that public, but it has to be a public meeting for them to come up with that.
Commissioner Engum, that is true. The board, the board is needing to decide whether they will appeal or not. They told us they would have a meeting this week that ended up being postponed. So we're tracking very closely when they have their next board meeting. They've told us that's when they will decide, although they technically have until June to make the decision, I think, because it's the end of the fiscal year, things are really tight. I also just real quickly, if I may want to point out that guidance related to how the appeal hearings should occur are in rule six point eight oh point four point fourteen discusses appeals to the secretary and actually in E one, it says that within sixty days after receipt of a notice of appeal, the secretary, after a public hearing that may be held in Santa Fe or in the school district in which the proposed charter school has applied for the charter school shall review the decision of the chartering authority and make written findings. So I'm not sure if that's also the same process. I would assume for a revocation that the sixty days is also in effect. Maybe Ms. Barnes can clarify that for us.
I don't have it open, but I'm happy to look. The, I think it's great to track what the school is doing, but the school has to notify us too. So just like we sent a very formal letter to the school with extensive documentation and and posted all of the documents that we relied on in the revocation folder in the Google Drive, they have a similar requirement. So you know, particularly when you move down a path towards something as serious as closing a school, the due process requirements get really tightened. And and it's one of the reasons for a rule. And so that rule that Director Chavez just mentioned has been in place and used many times, and it is used particularly by the parties. It sets very specific dates. It's it's like it is exactly like the secretary is the decision maker, and it's very, very formal. It's also very formal in that the secretary at this, not that the secretary would ever do it, but also the secretary is a decision maker, is gonna not take any action to reach out informally to any party right now about this process. It's very formal. So so we may get some information beforehand, but we're also going to get anything that's very formal. And we would also get any document where they requested that the school be allowed to continue. And actually, we have an opportunity to respond to that as well.
Commissioner Engum, are you finished? Okay, Commissioner Creo?
Is there? Does the secretary have the opportunity to, in a sense, pocket veto, except they want to appeal if he just doesn't respond by the end of sixty days? Okay.
Has to make a decision. And and then because they have a right to go to district court.
Okay.
Commissioner Gibson has told you, which still just shocks my conscience, that a that a court kind of just never took action on a case. I do know in the last one that we had, the parties requested that the court take action finally. I mean, I know it took a very long time, but it was coming up on the next year and and we had to take some action so that the attorneys said to the judge in the First Judicial District, please look at this. So I don't know what happened before. So and that was effective. That judge made a decision, I you know, pretty soon after that request. So the secretary tends to the secretaries, in my experience in the past, who tended to do what they needed to do in the time that they needed to do. In part because I think they're closer to knowing how schools work and all of those urgencies. So but you you have to make a case for a stay. And part of that is irreparable harm and shutting down your school is pretty good irreparable harm. At the same time, you have to show that you have that you have a chance of winning. So that's kind of where that argument comes about with that request.
I understand. Can we? Can we just scroll down just to see if somebody just we're not? I don't think this is going to require much discussion, but just the different headings.
Right. So we have that notification for parents, guardians, having a parent meeting, answering questions, providing a letter to staff so that they know, answering questions for them, finding out where the lease is and providing notification to the landlord, making sure that all personal personnel files are in good condition and providing W fours because the staff will need to file taxes that demonstrate that shows their employment for this year, conducting the inventory, as I mentioned before, and a very detailed inventory spreadsheet that lists all items and then having a process to disperse them. If there's a summer program, canceling that. If there's a summer program, canceling that, having the school choice fair so that families know where students can enroll. Contacting all of the existing vendors, including, you know, that when charter schools start up, they get an IRS status. They have to register with tax and rev, et cetera. So informing all of these entities that the school is closing and how can they get in touch with someone moving forward, making sure all bills are paid, and that there's no unleft bills. If you can scroll down a little bit, including utilities, et cetera. And then giving staff this transition letter that just is really, you know, again, communicating expectations and clarifying how the closure would occur. And the disposal plan, this is where we would be consulting with staff at the PED who know the various federal grant requirements. For example, if they purchase something using Title I, it might be different from CSP grants, which is different from maybe SEG. So we would make sure that we're doing this in coordination with our capital outlay bureau and other entities at the PED so that we are disposing of the assets in the way that the feds would expect us. Digitizing files, we already are in the process of getting quotes for what that might cost for staff, for student records, including any special ed files. And then getting access to the school's financial management services system so we know how the school is spending its money in this last couple of months of operations. Same with student information, making sure that we are obtaining access to that and getting bank signatory authority so that there's someone at the PED that has that. We're working closely with their liaison with, within school budget. And the director of school budget is working very closely with us already, making sure that people get their final paychecks, securing all financial records, making sure that documents are in place so that there can be a final audit, financial audit, and arranging for the transfer. Again, because they will be scanned, this may be digitization right away at the school site. And then the final thing you see here is the primary points of contact. And this is, talks mostly about the CSD staff members that are working on this, as well as our consultant, Ms. Sealy, who's working with us on the financial portion of this. Scrolling down a little bit, there's some additional points of contact because it will take a team of folks to be informed, to work closely with this and to answer any questions that the public might have or the school staff, families might have. That's what's in this plan. And this is, this is high level, really succinct. As you might imagine, you know, the inventory and some of the other work is pretty detailed and maybe lengthy. So we, we are in the process of contracting to have that work done.
Let me just add real quickly to follow up on Director Chavez's question. That section she referenced, I just moved that, that rule into your Google Drive. That same section applies to any appeal to the secretary. So this one and a non-renewal or any other action. So it does apply to, it's the same process for all of them.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. And I'll just also mention that the secretary is currently aware that the PEC has moved to close this school. Our Office of Legal Counsel got removed from this plan because they would be advising the secretary in any sort of appeal hearing, should there be one. So everybody is ready, aware. And the secretary is very responsive always with these types of appeal hearings.
Commissioner Creo?
As regarding money, have the assets already been either frozen? Or do they already need a signatory in order to write checks to do stuff?
So Commissioner Creo, as I mentioned before, each charter school has a school business, it's not manager, budget manager, that is within the PED that works very closely with the school. And in this case, the school budget director, Ms. Cordova, has been working closely with me and my team to monitor the school's budget. We have not yet obtained signatory, but that I believe will happen next Friday. We're having a meeting to have that transition.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanna add one more thing. One of the steps that is not, and that we're working very closely with the school, it's, it's business manager, who is Michael V. Hill, Jr., and the school budget person, to look at, are there any requests for reimbursement that they need to make now? As we know, sometimes charter schools leave money on the table if they don't submit requests for reimbursement. So we're trying to ensure that they are requesting for reimbursement, any federal monies that they might have access to, so that we might retain as much SEG as possible, which could pay for another month's lease or staff members who could stay on staff for an additional month to assist in this closure process.
Commissioner Gibson, then Commissioner Creo.
I'm gonna make a motion, so.
Commissioner Creo?
She can make the motion. I'll second. We'll discuss, you know, whatever.
Okay.
Okay. Just wanna make sure you didn't have another additional comment.
I have a question, but it can happen after she makes her motion. Okay.
We can only, if it relates to the motion.
Yeah.
It'll relate to the motion.
Okay.
Because the, there are a lot of dates that were listed and people who are going to do different things. Is the school in any way where their board, under any obligation, to formally agree to this? I'm asking that question. I know the answer, but I'm asking for the record and for those that weren't here yesterday.
I would say that we would want to work collaboratively with the school. And the closure process is something that would happen. Whether they completely sign off on all the steps or not, we're still going to implement the closure protocol.
Okay. Thank you. The answer is-
Also, that was why we added a sentence yesterday, that if the school doesn't take the action, CSD can take the action.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Creo, or sorry, Commissioner Gibson, apologies.
I move that the Public Education Commission adopt the closure template as shown in Document Eight for use in the closure of La Tierra Montessori School for the Arts and Sciences and authorize the Charter School Division to make any non-substantive changes or date modifications that may be needed.
I'll second.
All right, now we're in discussion. Commissioners, any additional discussion, questions about the motion? Is Katie seeing none? Vice Chair Burke, can you do roll call, please? And it looks like Commissioner Manis is not with us.
Commissioner Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Bert, yes. Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
And Commissioner Korea?
Yes.
All right, and I'm gonna look, just make sure Commissioner Manis is not there. All right, so that passes six zero.
Thank you, Vice Chair. All right, let me see here. We are on item number twelve, report from the Charter Schools Division. We complete, we did number nine and ten. We punted those, Commissioner Creo. There's no actions from our conversations yesterday. We went down to number eleven, then we skipped and jumped back up to item number eight. Vice, sorry, Director Chavez.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Brower. Commissioners, I am going to ask that twelve A is added to the agenda for next month. I am waiting for the academic data to be certified so I can give you a full report. In terms of update on schools with financial caps, we are, those are in progress. We are working on them. And I would like to just give a very brief update on CSD staffing. I'd like to start out by offering a very big congratulations to Ms. Lucy Valenzuela, who we have just promoted within the Charter Schools Division to serve in the capacity of TA. Wait a minute.
Authorizing practices specialist.
Thank you. So Lucy has already been supporting authorizing practices. She did a lot of the site visits within our, our annual site visit process and has just been a wonderful professional. And so we are lucky to have Lucy, and kudos to you, Lucy. A second staff person within the Charter Schools Division, Ms. Juliana Montoya, who's not here, has been the homeschool, homeschool administrator. And she has recently applied for and was given the position of TA and training specialist. So she will be working very closely with Missy on all board trainings and all TA and technical assistance work. So that position is open and it's posted. We are in the process of conducting Ed Admin A interviews. This would be to fill the position that Ms. Samantha vacated. We also have the Ed Admin B position open. And it is posted right now.
Is anybody? No, there's two positions currently posted, Lucy's former position and Juliana's former position. And we're doing interviews for Samantha's former position.
I also just want to let the commission know that I got a new boss this week. Ms. Amanda DeBel, who came over to the Public Education Department from Albuquerque Public Schools, is now overseeing me and several other folks. Her exact title, I think, just recently shifted. She was unable to make today's meeting, but I would like to invite her to the June meeting to meet you all. I know she said she is very much looking forward to that. She is in, again, her first weekend and getting all her ducks in a row, ready to serve in this capacity. So just wanted to give you guys that update as well. And Chair Brower, that's, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Director Chavez. Lucy, congratulations on the new role. Well deserved. I'm gonna move into item number thirteen, report from the chair, possible discussion and questions on my report. I'll keep it pretty, pretty short and sweet. First and foremost, I just wanted to acknowledge Dr. Russell being here in person with us. It's really great to have you here. It warms, it warms my heart personally, but I think it warms the PEC's heart collectively for you to be here. And we just know how much work you've, you've done over the course of the last couple of months from afar. And it's just really great to have your energy and your expertise here in the room with us, along with Director Chavez and the rest of the team. And so wishing you good tidings as you come back. And if there's anything that our, that our commission can do to support you from our, our angle, we'd love to do that for sure. So just wanted to acknowledge you for joining us here in person.
Thank you, Chair Brower.
I also wanted to shout out Sharon as well. Sharon, I had, had a couple of things happen to me this week earlier, including my Public Education Commission cellphone being stolen. And Sharon had one ready for me as soon as I came here on Thursday. And so I just, from a personal standpoint, I just really appreciate that. And so thank you for that. On a similar note, Ruby, yesterday, she allowed me to use her cellphone for about an hour and a half when I stepped out for a meeting that I could not move. I couldn't figure out a way to get on to any internet here in this building. And I couldn't find anyone helping. And she just jumped in. It was like, just take my phone. And I was like, okay, I'll thank you so much. And so anyhow, I just really appreciate the Charter School Division's team in doing whatever it takes. And I especially feel it this week personally for different things that have been happening for me. I only have one school that I wanted to talk a little bit about. And I believe Director Chavez and others are aware of this. Ames is a school that I started getting a couple of calls from parents. They're, and I'm not sure if we always talk about these things, but I felt like this is something, since I had two different parents call me about an incident. I won't go into major details, but there was a difficulty in getting hold of the, of the director of the school, as well as the governing council, to go through a due process around a student's an action that the school took against a student based on, on behavior. And so the parents, over the course of the last three weeks, have reached out to me on Saturdays to get my feedback. And so I've directed them back to the school, supported their efforts in getting a hold of the emails. And so, Missy, I know I sent some, sent one to you or to Karina to help them with getting, getting the right emails to use the due process that's at the school. I was still pretty concerned about the, the lack of support and understanding about the situation that was happening at the school. And I'm just hopeful that things were resolved. Constituent Services from PED was also involved in trying to figure out how to, how to support that school. And so I just hope that these, these things, as our schools work with our parents, I mean, they're our number one constituent outside of our students, that we should not try to shudder their voice, but we should lift their voice and figure out how, how we can problem solve. And this seemed to be a case of, of a disinterest in trying to truly understand what was happening and finding, finding a, a, a good path forward together between parents, students, and the school itself. I think those are the big things I wanted to share within my report. I'm gonna pass the mic to Wayne and the Public Charter Schools of New Mexico. Commissioner Creo?
No, you hadn't gotten there yet. I was just gonna ask, what's the Charter School Advisory Committee?
So the Charter School Advisory Committee, Commissioner Creo, was started when I, when I came in in Karina's seat in two thousand, in early 2019. We felt like there was a need to make sure, or I guess I should say, I felt there was a need to have different charter leaders, governing council members, you know, executive directors, kinda support my actions as a charter school director and to support some of the big policies coming in during the, the transition of the, of the governorship. So that has been there. I'm not sure if it's a vestige or it has been, has, I think, at this point, it hasn't necessarily been active over the last couple of years. So we likely will, will take this off. Or I can work with the CSD to see if this is something that would be valuable for us to continue. But we had about fifteen people who were actively involved in the, in the council.
Mike Ogas had been coming and doing reports for us, but then he kind of, I don't know if he's still the lead, I don't know if they're still meeting, but Mike was coming and doing a report. But it's been, it's been a while.
If I may, we, we need to hit the reset button on this. And I look forward to talking more with you about it, Chair Brower and any other commissioners for revisioning the advisory. I think that Mr. Ogas definitely was very much a part of this and needed to reshift his focus on renewal. And I understand that charter administrators are some of the busiest and hardest working people on the planet. So I would love to have an advisory. And to be fair, we have been engaging with charter leaders across the state in preparation for the Charter Schools Conference that we're holding. And Mr. Torres, who's not here today, would be able to name off those leaders that have been showing up regularly to provide input and advice on the conference. We have been working with them in that capacity for sure. But yeah, we probably need to hit a reset and be prepared to revitalize this advisory group. I've had some charter leaders that have offered. And I'm looking at Wayne as someone we might engage as part of the advisory. Thank you.
Yep, for sure. Thank you. Wayne?
All right. Thank you, Chair Brower and commissioners. Yeah, our big thing, of course, was the grant that we already talked about earlier. But I did wanna go back, and this is something we did briefly talk about yesterday. This is on the, the- But I did want to go back, and this is something we did briefly talk about yesterday. This is on the, the LESC, which the acronym is Legislative Educational Study Committee. And Commissioner Gibson talked a little bit about this yesterday. And there's 19 areas that they are going through and they're studying this year. Some of the things that the committee actually took some recommendations that PCSN M put out, and one of them was the study of transportation, that transportation formula. So you hit it right on the head. That's something that we had asked them to start studying because it's very difficult for charter schools to get transportation. They, having their own transportation is, is very difficult. And if you're a new charter school, you don't get any funding for the first year. So it's even, it's just a barrier that, that they need to figure out and how to, how to get those monies. So, you know, one of the things when we always go through renewal is how are, how are you getting all of these kids to your school from different areas? And you're not segregating any, any students. Well, when you don't have funding for transportation, it really is difficult to have students from all areas of your community to come to the school. It basically is in a walking community or those parents who can afford to transport the students to school. So that, that's a big thing. We're really looking forward to what, what they come up with, what some solutions. Hopefully they'll come up with some solutions. So next, hopefully. That's correct. Hopefully not charter unfriendly. And I, I know what usually comes out about, they're like, well, you just need to work with the district and have them support you. And, and we know that that's not always the case. And for a charter school to own their own buses and do transportation, and there are some. You know, we just mentioned Mike Ogas. Mike Ogas was able to do that down at SOTA. He was able to buy his own buses, get contractors and, and go around and pick up kids. So utilizing people like Mike Ogas to help out and say, how did you do this? What, what did you do to make this happen? So, and, and there are other charter leaders that have done the same. But Mike has a, has a big area in the Las Lunas area. So.
So, Wayne, can I just add, I think, I think what might be helpful moving forward, and I look forward to, to see what that transportation recommendation is. But I think moving forward, I'd like to see legislation that says a school district can't say no if they've got, you know, so that, you know, in the rural areas in particular, we've got school districts, we've got charters that if they were funded, they still wouldn't be able to transport their kids because the school district would say no. Same thing with food services. In some areas, the local school district is the only option. But the school district simply says, no, we're not going to contract with you. And they can. I, you know, I would like to see if we could get language to say, you know, no, you know, because we know it's not, they're getting paid for it. We're not asking for something for free for the school district to do something that they're not getting compensated for. But it's just that little, we don't like charter, so we're not going to contract with you. And it's a way of starve, trying to starve out, especially in those little areas. So I think it kind of has to be a two-pronged thing in case it doesn't, the recommendation doesn't look like we want it to look like.
So, I mean, I'm sorry, did you call me? So I would agree completely. Is this something that would have to be legislative? Or are there ever such things as directives from the secretary? Like edicts where he says, look, we need you to do this. Does that ever happen? I'm just curious.
Not that, um, I mean, I, in case of a, of an emergency, like a public health, there's that guidance that comes out. But I don't think the Cabinet Secretary, I could be wrong, but I don't think the Cabinet Secretary can call a school district, say, school districts have to do this.
I'm curious about that.
You know, I don't think so, but I'm not sure.
Then that should be, yes, but that, this can be if somebody's keeping a list for next February, for, or January for a legislative agenda. It's a great idea. And the thing that comes to mind is Gallup McKinley, how unsupportive they are, the charters in Gallup, in McKinley County.
Yeah, I think to your point, Commissioner Creo, and thank you for bringing this up, Commissioner Gibson, I think that the hardest thing, and it's, and again, there's always like the the blessing and curse, right? Like there's a preservation of local control and local decision-making. And also there are things that are equitable and should be more equal across the board. And so I think that that's a, that's an issue where, you know, when you think about an edict or, you know, some type of requests coming from a cabinet secretary, there's a lot of, it, it, it rubs raw in many ways and cuts in different ways. And so that's, that's uniquely not, that's unlikely to happen, but that's why we need something that, to really clarify this, this part for sure. So.
Well, I would support local, I support local control for districts, but I also support the idea that these are all our kids. And you don't want to leave them hungry by the curb just because you have some little bug up your whatever, right, about charters? So regarding first year, you mentioned this, Wayne, so the grant, because there's no transportation for first year, does the grant we spoke of earlier, could that be used for first year transportation?
Thank you, Commissioner. Bridget might be able to answer that. I know she's getting up. Karina, can you answer that question?
Can you repeat the question, please?
It was mentioned earlier by Wayne that they're, they can't get transportation money for their first year of operation. And I'm wondering, since it's a new school, can the grant be used for that?
CSP can be used to support transportation services either in a purchase, I believe, of a bus and for the first time, you know, operations for one year. It cannot be an ongoing thing, but as a startup, yes.
Oh, thanks.
Great question. Thank you. Okay, so also the PCSN M has, you know, we're supporting redesigning the educational data system. As you know, our stars, well, maybe you don't know, and I shouldn't assume that, but there is a student reporting system that we have that's doesn't necessarily always talk with the other entities that are being input into the program. So updating that system is something that really needs to be looked at and make it much easier for the schools, much easier for you when we do our, when PEC and CSD does the site visits, getting the information. And that's what is so critical is the information. Sometimes directors are inputting the same data three or four different times in different places, instead of just one place, getting that data and going to PED. And so that, that's really important. I think that would reduce, I, I know the governor talked about this last semester or last year about reducing the amount of paperwork on school officials. I would hope that would include the Public Education Department because I think they're overwhelmed with the amount of paperwork they have to do also. And this would help getting a new system that would be able to consolidate all of that information into, into one area. So Public Charter Schools support that. And I hope the LESC comes up with a good solution to that also. And, and other states are already doing this. So it's not like we're going out and looking at, and I'm saying that the state of New Mexico, the state of New Mexico just could look to other states and see what they're doing. And, and hopefully it'd be an easy transition. Some of the other things, the PCSN M is, is doing governing board training. They, just like the Public Education Department, they have their own trainings. The PCSN M has their trainings for governing board members. It is a fee that they, that the, they pay, but they are able to do like a one-hour course online. And so it's asynchronous. And hopefully the, the governing board members don't wait until June 29th to do their training. But we do know that that's a lot of times what happens. They all log in the last day, and then that really drives Missy crazy because they don't have their hours until the very, very last day before they have to do their training. So we've been working on that, and I, I got to actually do my first training, which was really bizarre. And, and I realized this is something I have to work out to get better at. So I, I appreciate Missy, what she's done for all these years in that training, because it's not so easy to, to do a Zoom by yourself. And then this is going to go out to all these people that they're going to see a recorded Zoom that you're basically just talking to yourself. So the PCSN M is, is now, we have our trainings up and ready, and PED has supported those and approved those trainings also. We're also looking forward to next month, going to the National Charter Alliance Conference in Austin, Texas. And I know several of the commissioners are also going. It's nice this year that it will be much closer to New Mexico. Last year it was in Washington DC, so the travel was a lot more difficult to do. And hopefully we can have more representation from New Mexico over at the Austin, Texas. So I'm looking forward to that also. That's about it.
Do you know if there's other schools? Have you heard if there's leaders from schools going?
Yes, there are. There are quite a few leaders from charter schools going over there and really looking forward to when we have our New Mexico meeting. That, that was a lot of fun up in Washington DC, and it should be even a, a larger meeting this year. So what I mean by that is during the conference, there's time set asides for all the different states to have a meet, just to get together for a little meet and greet and, you know, just discuss what they've already seen and heard at the conference. And it, it's a lot of fun. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Wayne. Commissioner Ingham?
Well, my question's kind of generic, but I think I was invited to go to a LESC meeting in Burnaleo.
Yes.
Is that, I mean, did I miss it already? Or?
I believe you did, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was Monday and Tuesday of, of this past week at Burnaleo High School. It's, you know.
Can I go to that?
Anyone can go to it. It's a public meeting.
Okay, okay. And I.
There's, the only opportunity for public input is at the very, very beginning of the meeting. Otherwise, there's no, no, no comments are allowed by the public.
No, but some, I, I think sometimes attendance is, is, I mean, being on.
Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay. Sometimes just being in attendance makes a difference. And that now being on the AMS Committee and the PSCOC Committee with several, I can't remember who's the person is one of the LESC leaders, or I would, I would like to attend is what it was done to. So.
They're, um, yeah, if you go on the, you go on the New Mexico Legislature's site, there's the committee information. And there's the calendar for, because the first four or five meetings, they meet, so they're meeting in Taos, they're meeting in Grants, they're meeting in Carlsbad, and then they'll be back in Santa Fe, November and December, October, November, and November and December. So they meet all around the state during most of their interim time.
Commissioner Ingham, if you would like to go, Commissioner Gibson is our liaison for the PEC. And so just sync up with her, and she'll be able to tell you. And she's very good at this. So, so she does not, she, she, she will lead you in the right direction for sure.
And Commissioner Gibson and I were talking about this yesterday, that this year is the first year, the, at these meetings, that they are actually inviting directors from charter schools to attend, the local charter schools that are in those areas. They, they always invite a superintendent to, you know, the, whatever superintendents are in that area. Now they're actually inviting a couple charter school leaders to attend those meetings also. So that is saying that charter schools are starting to get a seat at the table, which is, hasn't happened in the last 20 years. And here we are now finally starting to get a seat at, at the table, and they're listening to the charter schools and saying, what do you guys need for, for support from us? So it's, it's really moving forward. I'm, I'm glad to see that in this new administration supporting charter schools.
Thank you, Wayne, for coming yesterday and today.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And if you brought the rain from the south, we really appreciate it. Let's move into item number 14, Discussion and Possible Action to Provide Input to Liaisons to Speak on Behalf of the PEC. I'm going to have Vice Chair Burt weigh in real quick, because I think this is something you wanted to have on the agenda.
Yeah. And actually, I was thinking about after that we probably could have put that PEC letter of support. That's like the kind of thing that pops up every once in a while. Um, that would be probably most, like, that's what we're looking for in this time. So if anyone who's a liaison needs to speak on behalf of the PEC, needs a letter of support, needs to know whether to say the PEC, you know, wishes to express, you know, support or discontentment for any of the issues that are coming up in the liaison positions. This just gives an opportunity every month to be able to be proactive in that for the next month.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I think this is also a spot where, for instance, for Commissioner Ingham, I had to sign over an agreement to make you the liaison for the PSCOC. So if there's any situation for others who are sitting on, on boards or, or other agencies on behalf of the PEC, and you need any paperwork for that, just let me know. But are there any requests for discussion or possible actions based on your liaison work? Based on yesterday's reports that we did during the group, the, the working group session, I don't think we have any. Great, thank you. And thank you, Vice Chair, for putting this back on the agenda. All right, item number 15, PEC comments. So this is a time where this is not a discussion and no action is going to be taking place. But these are opportunities also for the PEC commissioners to have a chance to share anything. By no means do all of us have to take our turn as well. So if there's something that you feel like you need to share with us all, this is a great opportunity for us to do it. If there's not anything that, to share, it's totally okay as well. Commissioner Beck?
Again, I just want to thank the continuing commissioners for helping us newbies out. This is a big learning curve. You know, there's a lot of bureaucratic issues that when I had my own business and teaching, I didn't have to deal with. So especially Commissioner Gibson next to me, for all the acronyms, what the heck do they mean? And everything, Commissioner Creo, for sure. And Commissioner Burt, thank you for making the learning curve somewhat easier.
Thank you, Commissioner Beck. Commissioner Creo?
Okay. Attended Monmouth Little Soul's graduation a couple of days ago. And those of you, if you've never been to one of the high school graduations of your charters, they're super duper fun. And I just highly recommend you find out when they are. Unfortunately, in many cases, they're on the same days, same times. Like today, you know, there's, well, yesterday I know there was a master's program, and today there's chair and cantada. So I can't attend those, but, and I called them and told them, you know, congratulations. But it's just, if you can go, it's, we have very few opportunities. There's that layer that you, that's between us and the schools that isn't on, like on a traditional school board, where you're always in schools. But it's great to connect with everybody. And they're, and they're super duper happy that you're there. So, and they make no qualms about letting you know that.
I'm attending the eighth grade graduation tomorrow for the Albuquerque School of Excellence. And they asked me to be the featured speaker. Unfortunately, I'm having vocal cord issues. And I told them I couldn't speak because I, I'm having a hard time speaking, but I'm really looking forward, I'm going to, I'm really looking forward to going there. So that'll be pretty cool.
You sound fine to me, a little groggy, a little raspy, but what the heck?
I'm annoyed on the vocal cord. I'm going to the ENT on Tuesday to see if it has to be dealt with.
Well, I'm going to go see Isabel St. Ange in their school way up north because they have such an unusual program. And I had no intention of speaking at all. And they asked me if I would. And I said, I'll keep it to three minutes, I promise. And what's really funny is they said, they took a vote. Isabel really wanted a keynote, not me or anything, but long before. And the kids like took a vote and said, no. They said, how long would they speak for? And she said, I don't know, like, you know, six, eight minutes. And I said, no. The kids didn't want anybody. And she said, well, I'm overriding you. So they have somebody from Taos, a prominent person in the Taos community speaking, but super fun. God, that one's on June, like June 2nd or something. Um, I don't know where this fits here. Maybe it's under new business about New Mexico Connections Academy. So I'll maybe wait. So I'll maybe wait till the next thing. Okay. That would be my only thing on comments, just, it's just that time of year. And being at these graduations is very joyful. Kids are inspiring.
Thank you, Commissioner Creo. Commissioner Ingham.
Cannot hear you, sir. Cannot hear you, sir.
I have to admit to my lack of brain cells. I went to, I think it's the Rio Grande Academy for, for fine arts. Yeah, I went to their end of the year thing. And I just had a blast and stayed there and bought some artwork from one of the teachers. And really, they do really appreciate you coming to their deals. And I thoroughly enjoyed it, met lots of people, really made some, some new friends. And so I, I wanted to say thank you for that. I did want to mention what didn't happen yesterday, and I apologize for not being here, but it was unavoidable. But the, having the NMFA, Marquita, Marquita, I can't remember her last name from NMFA came. I had encouraged her to come. Apparently I had dropped the ball somehow with trying to get contact information. I had contacted her specifically to come, and she did come. In fact, she had to cancel another meeting to go to, to come here. And then we didn't have her on the agenda. I think it's going to be very important that they speak to us, because I think they have a different attitude about charter schools right now. I had heard rumor that they had not been very excited about working with charter schools in the past. But they do seem to be, and they want to use, I believe, they're making some accommodation with that $10 million fund to use that in some way to allow for charters to access further funding to do maintenance and, and new facilities. I think it's real important to hear from them. So I would request that we get, if I can talk her into coming again, I would like to put her on the agenda again and try to get that information. I was hoping to get those two together to work together with us, because I think that they, they have a collaborative, they need to be collaborative, and they, they have had, PSFA and NMFA have had trouble just communicating. And I don't know why that is, but I'm trying to foster that. I would hope we could maybe put them on the agenda for next.
That's next item, Commissioner. And if there's no other actions or no other comments, we'll move on to the next item. All right, so discussion of new business topics. So Commissioner Ingham, when you do have an item that you would like to have on the comment, like, we do have to follow our process to either talk to me or talk to one of the other executive committee members, Vice Chair Burt or Secretary Amiho, so that we know about this. So we do have to have the person from NMFA that actually be on our agenda, so that we could have them speak. Unless it was during public comment, which is not satisfying of a three-minute comment. So, so if that is something you would like to have, we're taking note of that right now. And maybe you can work with us to see if she can join again in our June meeting. And we, oftentimes we need a second, it doesn't necessarily have to be a second right now. But if there, but we do need a second. In the past, you know, Commissioner Creo had an idea, and I got two seconds through email that allowed us to have it on the agenda. So is that something you'd like to have, if there is somebody who would like to make a second on that now, or would like to follow up with us?
Second, because I thought the request had been made last month.
It was.
For both.
Yeah, so that's what I was actually about to, that's why, the only reason I have my hand raised is to make sure it does get, and actually it was, I don't know how it got dropped off the agenda when we first started drafting it. I, I made it clear that it was both. So it was definitely an error on our side, not on Commissioner Ingham's.
Great. Commissioner Ingham, I will take full responsibility from that. And so thank you for following our protocol. I was unaware that we did that, so that's on me for not, not knowing that. And so we'll be better as an executive committee team. If you would like to follow up with her and to see if she could be joining us on, in June, that'd be great. Okay. Great.
I'm not hearing what's being discussed.
That's okay, that's okay, Cindy, we got it. Commissioner Creo.
Okay, we're on.
Item as well.
16, right? Items for next agenda and stuff?
Yep.
So I, I think we should probably put New Mexico Connections. Patty, should that be, or Miss relative?
We have to circle up with Julia about that, because it can't be on the next agenda item. It's, it's, it's in regards to the negotiation. So I think that's something that's, that's spoken of offline about this, not on, not an agenda item. That would, that has to be done.
First, and then, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
The schools for contracts are on the next agenda, and they are one of those. Yeah, but that'll happen before. And we're hoping to have everything finished with their contract, so that that contract can be brought to the PEC, but there's.
At the same time next month.
Yeah.
So we'll have something before then on Zoom or whatever. Okay, sweet. So the, so if it's possible and if others agree, you know, when we do like a shout out for a school, like let's say with Turquoise Trail, they had that thing where it was all kid-directed, where they got money from Capital Outlay to do a playground or something. I would like that to come at the beginning of the Friday meeting, early, so that maybe even before consent agenda. So there's the item there, and it doesn't have to be, I wouldn't have it be something that is for discussion, just for presentation. And so that, you know, if I find out something three days in advance of the meeting, they have three kids that are going to Stanford, holy cow, you know, it's something I can do a shout out for, or whatever it might be. But that, that be at the beginning of the meeting, separate from PEC comments and new business, but shout out something, I don't know what you'd want to call it, be at the beginning of the meeting before consent. Because if we wait some time to the very end, I mean, granted today, it's equally, it's only 10:40. But, you know, if it's 3:30 or 4, by then, most of the people have checked out by the time we're doing reports. And so if we really want people to be acknowledged for some of the fine work they're doing, or awards they've won, or grants they've received, I'd like that to happen. Does anyone else feel similarly?
I think a school spotlight, we did it for a while, and then we just, you know, like, stuff happens, but yeah.
Little spotlight.
Spotlight, yeah.
Yeah, and so any commissioner.
Could just add in.
Yeah.
We used to do this during the director, the charter, yeah, the director's report. And it, most of the time was at the, most of the time was at, at the top, close to the top of the agenda. So we could potentially work with the EC and kind of figure out where we want the, the reports to be done. But it usually was like item number four or six, depending on how big our, how extensive our, our item, our items were, so.
Well, I don't think it's an EC deal. I think it's just like a standing thing that we could even today, we still vote or anything, decide, yeah, we want to do this, and we want it to be between the, you know, approval, after open forum and before consent.
That's where we used to have it. That's what I was saying.
Oh, okay. And, but it'd just be a standing thing that's on the agenda. Sweet. Yeah. Super cool. Thank you. Any other, Vice Chair Burt?
I was just going to say, if, if, I think at any point, I don't know if it necessarily needs to be a standing one, but if a commissioner has something like that, they should just tell someone, Karina, the chair, someone. And then we could put it on at the beginning of the agenda. I don't know if it necessarily, like, I think it looks bad to have like a standing item that doesn't get filled sometimes. So if there's ever something cool, I think it's on the commissioners. And I mean, Director Travis is always looking, I know she's always looking for stuff. But if you have something, just say something as well.
No, but then you would have to, if you, then you'd have to know far enough in advance to be able to tell somebody. But if it's a standing item, you know, a place setter essentially, if it's a standing thing that says spotlights, you know, school spotlight, and then people have a chance, because you might, our meetings are on Friday. We might not find something out, you know, till Wednesday that so-and-so, I don't know, whatever it might be. So I would, I would disagree with you, Vice Chair Burt, on that. I would just have a.
You don't think we would need to put what the presentation is about? I mean, I think it doesn't have to be.
Says spotlight schools, you know, PE, Commissioner spotlight schools. And that's all it needs to say, or something like that. And then if there's, just like for public, just like comments down here, if, we don't know what any comments are going to be, you know? But it's just there as a standing item.
I guess I would just defer to Julia if that qualifies under OMA.
Yeah, and I would just say, Vice Chair Burt, I mean, what we had did in the past was we, we agreed on what, what schools we were spotlighting. So it wasn't like any old spotlight, but it was, we needed to know at least by the time we made our agenda, what schools would have.
I'm sorry, I just thought this would be like the simplest thing ever. We had, because there are agendas all over the F-ing world that have standing items. The same way we have, I don't know what my comments are going to be under, you know, possibly, item 15, PEC comments, no discussion or action taken. It can be simply PEC spotlight schools, no discussion or action taken, and it's the opportunity. It's, this is to me like the no-brainer of no brainers. What you want to do with it there? I've said my thing. Don't complicate it for God's sake. Just put it there as a standing item in number four.
We'll get, we'll get, we'll get what we need to get. We'll get to the spirit of it, Commissioner. And also, let's, let's make sure we, we use proper decorum. And yeah, I know you used only a alphabet letter, but that's like, just be careful. But I think we can figure it out. There's, the spirit is there. We all agree. I, I loved it when I was in Karina's seat. It was the best thing that I did in front of Chair Gibson, like every month, you know, in these meetings. Was to like lift up opportunities to share, like, great things that schools are doing. And so, so the spirit is there. We'll just figure out the technicalities, and we'll make sure that that spirit is not harmed in any way. So appreciate you.
I think the spirit that Commissioner Creo has is just a little different. Because when we, when we did it before, there were schools that were targeted, and there were like video presentations and all that. I think what he's just attempting to get at is just a quick kudos. You know, I had, you know, there were five kids that went to the robotics competition from my district, you know? And things like that, not just having the school have to figure out some, you know, video presentations. And I appreciate those, but I don't think, I think we've got two different views of what this is, the meaning behind these. This is just, you know, great, you know? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you know what? We can do both of those. We don't have to split a baby here. We can share a loaf. So we'll do that. Any other comments? Any other new business? We good? Oof, what time is it? So we're going to move to item number 17?
Not quite, but.
Item number 17.
Albuquerque.
Can I get a motion?
I did.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Vice Chair Burt, can we do a roll call, please?
Chair Brower?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Manis is not present still. Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Creo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Burt, yes, that passes 6-0.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burt. Thank you all. Thank you, public, for joining us. It's 10:46 and we are adjourned.